Okay. Welcome, everyone, in the new year. Thank you for joining us this morning. We've got a wonderful agenda. We are going to start off with the approval of the December meeting minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes? And a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to the election of officers for council, we will be voting for the next, this coming, or this year's president and vice president. Do we have a motion for the office of president?
I'd like to move to nominate Elise Nishala as our president. Appreciate the hard, hard work that she puts in and the care she has for our community. I'd just like to make that nomination.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It was supposed to be up for discussion. Sorry.
Okay, excuse me. Any discussion?
Yes. I want everybody in this room to know that I will work, I have and I will continue to work 100% with this board up here. 100%. If there's such a thing as 200%, it's going to be 200%. There has been a lot of discussion over the last several months that many of you in this room have no idea that has taken place. And I want to make sure that people in this audience and anybody listening through Zoom understands where I'm coming from, the reason I am not supporting Elise, or the current leadership, I'll say. And here's the reason why. There have been allegations, and I'm not going to mention any names. There have been allegations against someone on this board. And I very eloquently put together an email letter to my members up here on this council. One person responded. I'm going to read that letter. And then you'll understand why I stand where I stand. Thomas Jefferson said, and I learned this at Tech High School in 1974 as a sophomore, from my history teacher, as we talked about our founding fathers, and I have never forgotten this. Thomas Jefferson said, "In matters of fashion, you go with the flow. In matters of principle, you be as solid as a rock." I have principles that I stand by. I have stood up and had many conversations with my council members up here about what I'm getting ready to discuss with you. I am not backing down. I'm going to stand firm in my beliefs. I have personal reasons, which I'm not going to discuss with you. But I will read the letter to all of you, because I want to make known public the reason I stand where I stand on this matter.
May I just, for one moment?
Yes.
Counselor. May I ask for some guidance here from our attorney? Is this an appropriate time for
With all due respect, whatever you say, doesn't matter. I'm reading this.
Okay. I honestly don't know what you're about to read, so this isn't a, this appears to be a time for comment about election of officers?
Up for discussion.
For discussion of officers. I would caution any statements you make, just based on what you've said so far.
Yep.
Without knowing anything at all.
Yep.
I would say that it's probably, I don't know what you're about to say, so I'm sorry. I don't.
As I said, I'm not mentioning any names.
If it's not relevant to
Oh, it is relevant. It is relevant. It's very relevant. It is very relevant. In matters of fashion, you go with the flow. In matters of principle, I'm as solid as a rock. And I stand up on my beliefs. I am not backing down. This email, this
I would probably caution you not to say anything at this time.
I understand. And thank you for your advice. But I'm going to politely decline your advice.
Make you not say something. I mean, I would advise you publicly not to say anything publicly at this time.
I understand. I wrote this back on December the 12th, was when I wrote this. This email is addressed to Elise Nishala as the Boone County President and Don Lamb as the Boone County Council Vice President. The carbon copy is being sent to the other four council members. This email is intended for my fellow Boone County members. A few weeks ago, mind you, this is in December. A few weeks ago, I read an investigative report authored by an investigator from the Ice Miller Law Firm with respect to sexual harassment allegations toward a quote respondent, who shall remain nameless, by three different quote complainants, who shall remain nameless, and witnesses, who shall remain nameless, who are employees of Boone County, Indiana. After powerful thought and consideration for all those involved and speaking to my council members, I have decided to let all of you know where I stand on what needs to be done as soon as possible. These are my opinions and mine alone. I live in this world called Realville. With Kevin Van Horn, what you see is what you get. Cream rises to the top. Truth is always the best answer. What is right is right, and what is wrong is wrong. In this email, I want to address the issue of the respondent mentioned in the Ice Miller investigative report to remove himself from any committees they are serving on with respect to Boone County, Indiana government work. I've read the Ice Miller investigation report, and I've spoken to the respondent, Elise, on the phone about that report. That individual told me they did not read the report. Elise, Don, Jennifer told me they've read the report. After reading the investigative report, the investigator and author of the Ice Miller, of Ice Miller Law Firm believed the quote complainants to be quote truthful, and the respondent's story to be quote less than truthful. I'm not a lawyer. And I'm not sure what the definition of criminal quote is with respect to this report. The author stated the respondent's offenses did not rise to quote criminal offense, but did quote violate the definition of hostile work environment unquote, as written in the Boone County Employee Handbook. With respect to this Boone County Council, elected officials throughout the county, and employees who work hard every day, it is my daily prayer, we all work together to ensure the employees, the residents, and the many visitors passing through the county are safe from harm of any kind. I've spoken to all of you about the investigative report, some of you with lengthy conversations, and some of you briefly about the accusations against the respondent within the report, and my concerns about the respondent's guilt or innocence. If one person made these allegations, I might think it was a he said, she said. Three complainants and a few witnesses have similar complaints, my spider senses are on high alert. When the media finds out about the accusations, the Ice Miller investigator quote found to be truthful unquote, but by the complainants, this is going to look bad, as if we as a council looked the other way. Someone will ask, quote, "You didn't take any action to have the accused removed from any committees, and why not?" In the court of law, we are innocent until proven guilty. In the court of public opinion, it becomes a different situation. I cannot remove any of my fellow council members from any committees. The president of the council with four votes can. I can make a motion, but again, I'd need three more votes to get it done. In my humble opinion, I believe the respondent should step away from their duties and assignments. If I were a female employee of the county and discovered, and discovered the investigative report and how the author believed the respondent to be quote less than truthful in their retelling of the alleged events, and the respondent was allowed to continue their duties with individuals who are not aware of their allegation, their alleged action, and they found out, then we're all in trouble. With all due respect, I'm asking the respondent to remove themselves from any committees they currently serve on. If you refuse to step away, I'm asking President Elise Nishala to remove you from those committees. This council needs to be strong and in good standing with the Boone County Departments and municipalities throughout Boone County. We as council members need to demonstrate to our constituents, to those who trust us, that in solidarity, we are moving Boone County forward in the best way possible. Please call me if you have any questions or comments. One person. One person up here called me, and that was Jennifer. One person. I made some phone calls last night. I spoke with Elise first, and I let her know, "Elise, I'm not supporting you." Don. I had conversation with Don. I support Don, because he was under the leadership of Elise. And with all due respect to Elise, she knows exactly how I feel. I'm not going to get into the personal issues with it. She knows exactly how I feel about this. And we have an agreement where we can agree to disagree. Doesn't mean that I don't respect her, because I respect the hard work that she does for this council, and I respect the hard work that every one of us does for the county up here on this council. But I cannot support somebody that does not want to stand up when allegations are made against somebody and do nothing about it, thinking that it's going to go away, and I'm only doing this because of the advice of council. And with all due respect to the advice of council, what's her name?
Ashley.
Ashley, with all due respect to the advice of council, whether it be you, or Jules, or anybody else through Taft, there's an issue there where I'm not going to go into all of the reasons why I went against your advice. I'm not going to go into those reasons. With that being said, when I hear Elise say that the reason she hasn't done anything over the last several months is because of the advice of council, I could very politely say to Elise, "Well, with all due respect, Elise, I don't think that that council has given you the right advice." Now, we can agree to disagree. And with that being said, I cannot support Elise as the president of the council. She's going to end up getting the four votes up here. She might not. She might not, but my guess is she's going to get her four votes. And Don, as the vice president?
I want to make some comments.
And I'm finished. That's all I have to say.
Okay.
That's all I have to say. And if anybody else wants to say anything, any questions? As I said in the, back on December the 12th, if you have any questions or comments, my phone number is there. You can call me. One person, Jennifer Hostetter, sent me a text, and, excuse me, an email, responded to it in a very positive way. Nobody else did. And I've thought about it. My wife told me last night, "Kevin, you're not going to sleep well now. I've been up since 1:30 this morning." This is the hardest thing, one of, not the hardest, one of the hardest things I've ever done in a public forum. I didn't want to do this. But I'm that guy who needs to stand up on the mountaintop for the employees of Boone County, Indiana, for visitors that pass through this county, to ensure that every single one of us and every single one of them are safe and protected. And as I said in my email, if it was one person, I might say, eh, it's a he said, she said. But when three complainants and three witnesses, uh-uh, my spider senses are up. And then to find out that
Can I admit? I would say from a legal standpoint, I don't think it's appropriate to keep discussing details of something like this.
I got it.
I appreciate your opinion, and I think you've made it clear.
You and I have had that discussion, Don.
And I appreciate that. And the only other comment I would say is that there's been a lot of sleepless nights from a lot of people.
Yep.
And Elise has definitely had that, and there's been a lot. When you say over the last couple of months, conversations, there's been a lot, a lot, a lot of hours put in behind the scenes. And the only thing I would add is that it hasn't been pushed away. It's been very much a part of a lot of conversations. And other than that, I think it would be inappropriate to continue further details of it, but but my nomination stands, and I think we ought to vote for the leadership. And I do appreciate your thoughts, Kevin. I really do.
And I know you do. You and I have had that conversation, and I honor you for being straightforward with me and just speaking from your heart and letting me know exactly where you stand. He's plainly stated that to me, and I honor him for that. That's all. Anybody else up here have any questions toward me?
Nomination.
So, do we have a second?
And a second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Thank you.
I do have a quick question. You're supposed to be the only one communicating with Taft, correct?
I'm the lead communicator as the president of the council.
I've been watching the two of you throughout this. The second you put your phone down, you look at her, you pick your phone up, and you start texting. The second you get done texting, you look right back at him and put your phone down. I don't expect either of you to admit that that's what you're doing right now, but it's completely inappropriate that that's what's happening, since Elise is supposed to be the only one communicating with our council.
Well, I guess.
I'm not texting you either.
I didn't, I didn't expect, I don't expect either of you to admit that right now.
Pretty egregious assumption, which is an accusation.
I just said I don't expect.
Let me clarify this for the record. My challenge is contact Tracy for COVID, and we're testing, we're talking to all the parents who are in class.
Okay. I said I don't expect you to be on this right now, so.
Ashley, do you have a comment?
I was texting my co-council tool, which I have a right to do during the week.
And you do represent?
And I represent the council.
Not me, sorry. Taft does not represent me on this council.
Legally, do you represent the entire council?
I'm permitted to have my own attorney.
Okay.
Let's go to the vice president.
Yes. Do we have a motion for vice president?
I'm going to nominate Don Lamb.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. As far as the matter that you brought up, I just want to say we had a, I did, we had a really great meeting in response to this, so I honor you and your service as a council member, and we spent a lot of good time talking about this in person. So I just wanted to mention that. All right. Moving on. All right. We have appointments to make today. And let's move forward with that. All right. Kevin, thank you for administrating this, and we'd like to ask Molly Hanlon and Ed Canberra from the Hussey Mayfield Memorial Public Library up to the podium to make a brief update.
Good morning. Thank you very much for the opportunity to go ahead and speak, and also for the opportunity to serve. My name is Ed Canberra. This is Molly Hanlon. We're both on the board of the Hussey Mayfield Memorial Public Library. And I'm going to go ahead and keep my segment relatively short. I've just concluded my second term on the board. Handout provided to folks separately has gone ahead and outlined a few special projects that I've been involved in during the course of those two particular terms. I'd like to go ahead and request reappointment for a third term. The library is just in the beginning stages of a major expansion over into Worth Township. There are going to be a large number of issues popping up associated with that particular expansion. And with my experience both on the board as well as professionally, as a financial professional, I think that I'm in a position where I could go and make an ongoing contribution. With that in mind, are there any particular questions for me that anyone on the council would happen to have? With that in mind, then, what I'd like to go ahead and do is to go ahead and yield over to Molly, who would like to have a few comments made in regards to that particular expansion project. Thank you so much for your time this morning.
Thank you, Ms. King.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, Ed is our, head of our finance committee, and I love serving with Ed. I'm Molly Hanlon. I'm the board vice president, and I was last here in April, and I just wanted to come this morning and give you a really quick update about the new branch and Hussey Mayfield's expansion into Worth Township. In August of 2020, the Worth Township trustees voted to add Worth Township to our service area. We were already serving Eagle and Union Townships. While we've been working on this new physical branch, hundreds of Worth residents have signed up for library cards, which is great. And we have a bookmobile that's on the road that serves all three townships now, so bringing programming and holds and materials to homebound patrons and residents. 2021, last year, we were really busy planning the new physical branch. We conducted, in the spring, we conducted two rounds of online community surveys to determine what residents want in the new branch. We hired KRM Architecture out of Indianapolis, who designed the new building, and we presented all the plans to the public in August. The branch will be built on Albertus White Drive, right off of Anson Boulevard, which is just a fantastic location. And that land was donated to the library by the town of Whitestown. Just just an ideal situation. We're really, really grateful for the land and the donation and their support of the project. In October, we issued an RFP for the construction of the branch. We're currently finalizing the contract with the lowest bidder. We hope to have that signed any day now. And the plan is to break ground this spring and open it about a year from now, in spring, early summer of 2023. So I have a handout for you, too, with a timeline and some details, and if you have any questions.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, let's go ahead and go through the appointments.
Okay. Each year in December, actually, in the middle of October and November, I start reaching out to all these individuals where their terms expire. And I call them up, reach out to them, ask them if they're willing to continue to serve, and I always get a yes, unless somebody moves. That's only happened once. We have, on the alcoholic beverage board, Ben Worrall. He's accepted, and we're going to do these individually?
Yes. So do we have a motion for Ben Worrall to, to another term on the alcoholic beverage board?
Make the motion to continue with Ben Worrall as the alcoholic beverage board member.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
The Hussey Mayfield Library Board, we have Ed Canberra. I make a motion to keep him on board, as he has so eloquently talked about who he is and what he does for the library over there.
All right. Do we have a motion for Ed Canberra? And thank you. Second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
For the Dorantown Public Library Board, Judith Johnson.
Wait, Molly. Is Molly's term not up?
It's not up right now.
Thank you, Molly. Okay.
But I have your other appointment.
Yes.
Dorantown Public Library Board, Judith Johnson. It says September 2022 was when she, or when hers expires. I'm not sure exactly what you guys have in the office over there, because I thought they all expired in December. Yeah, okay. But I make a motion to keep Judith Johnson where she is. She has accepted the challenge again.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter Bowe, we have Lisa Batts. Matt Jackson and Walter Bertner, all three of them I've spoken with, and they've accepted. I make a motion that we keep all three of them in that position. Again, for the Peter Bowe Board, that's Lisa Batts, Matthew Jackson, and Walter Bertner.
All right. Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
The Boone County Convention and Visitor Bureau, Elise removed herself from that position, and I accepted the position, so I'm not going to make a motion for myself.
Yes.
I think we need to appoint Kevin Van Horn as the council representative to the convention, Convention Visitors Bureau.
Yes. Okay. And do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And it's been a privilege serving on the Boone County Convention and Visitors Bureau, and I'm looking forward to your service on that board now.
Boone County Redevelopment Commission, Ben Lawson and John Reiner. I make a motion that those two individuals stay where they are.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Boone County Solid Waste District, Marcia Willhoy. I make a motion that we keep her there.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And finally, Boone County Economic Development Corporation, Elise Nishala. I make a motion to keep her in that position.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. All right. New business. Nick Parr with the Highway Department to discuss the Coon Bridge rate.
Nick Parr, Boone County Highway. Before I get to that, I want to let everybody know that we hired a new county engineer, Mike Garowski. His first day was yesterday. I was going to have him come up and do this for me, but I figured it'd be better if I just go ahead and talk about this myself. Background, construction supervision. Worked for various companies on a lot of different end-op projects, so we're excited to have him on board. Wanted to talk to you today a little bit about the Coon Bridge rate. I know we've talked about it in the past. I met with Don and Marcia a few weeks back after our letter we brought for the federal aid request indicating we didn't have enough funds to maintain some federal aid projects for the next few years due to the gap in the funding until we get to the bond funds, and discussed the BFNS study that was done. So those, part of that recommendation to the Butler Fairman Study that was completed, that we look at the Coon Bridge rate and see if there's a way to increase that and what that amount would be and what that rate would look like. So after that discussion, I've talked to the county commissioners at the last meeting, because they're the ones that have to actually establish the rate, but it is inside the levy, and it would impact other rates within, inside that levy. Just wanted to bring that up to the entire board. You guys knew that we were working on it. That way, there wasn't a surprise in the future. It has to be done this spring, I think, was our discussion.
Why, is it April or something like that?
I believe the cutoff is July 1st. I've already contacted Paige. She's already working on it with the amount that Nick had mentioned. I think it was $600,000-ish.
Correct.
So she's already putting all those numbers together as soon as I get those all forward to all of you guys for your consideration.
Thank you.
Do you remember the Butler Fairman Study suggested that to reach our goal, that a $600,000 amount per year would be sufficient for us to complete some additional bridges?
Yes. Helpless bridges are in great need.
And one other part of that is that Nick does a good job of always getting state and federal money wherever he can, and so anything we can do that multiplies our money is a good thing. So that's a big key, too, because we got to match. And so it's part of the picture, it's part of the puzzle. It makes a lot of sense.
And the other part is our general fund will go down if we raise the rate to the Coon Bridge, but we were over 20% when we finished up the budget last year. We're not down at below 10 or something like that.
I was just going to reiterate what Marcia's saying. I think it's important for the public to understand, and for those here to understand that this is not an increase in taxes. This is a shifting of the general fund levy that we already have. And the Coon Bridge rate has been at this level, I think, for 17 years.
It's been a while.
Yeah. And it's been a difficult situation, because, and then back, I think it was 10 years ago, there was a lump sum taken out of Coon Bridge to, during a really bad economic downturn, to help the general fund. And so the Coon Bridge has suffered over the years, and this is an effort to get the Coon Bridge back to an income level that allows Nick to do what he needs to do with the bridges. So I just want to make sure everybody understands it's not a tax increase.
Yeah, it's all about the leverage. We use Coon Bridge for leveraging the community crossing dollars to get on the federal aid projects for those bridge replacements. And those are 80/20 on federal aid and 50/50 on construction for community crossing dollars. Just want to bring that to the board's attention and let you know we're working on it.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Nick, what's the new county engineer? What's your name again?
Mike Goralski.
Mike.
Goralski.
G-O-R-A-L-S-K-I.
Yes.
I got it.
All right. Thank you.
Welcome aboard, Mike.
Yes.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right, next. One question. Auditor Crum, new business or old business for that? Okay, all right, thank you. First Person, who is the vendor that has been selected to conduct the county's wage study. Thank you for being with us this morning.
Thank you so much for having us. So I know we met early on, at least most of us, but I'm Megan Nail. I'm the vice president of the Total Rewards practice here at First Person and we are excited to kick off the compensation and total rewards study with all of you. I'm joined by my colleagues. I'll let them introduce themselves.
Katie Stowers, Senior Vice President and General Counsel at First Person. I work with Megan on the compensation issues, particularly executive compensation.
And Abby Steele, Total Rewards Analyst, and I will be one of the primary analysts on this project going forward.
Thank you.
So we're excited to meet with all of you and get this work kicked off. A couple of questions that we wanted to bring up as we start in earnest on work with the entire council. So for, our first question is, who should our day-to-day contact be in terms of gathering the job descriptions and some of the other details for the project? Excuse us, we're getting some interference here.
I was, as far as, I'll be the point person on the council.
Great.
As far as that goes, day-to-day, Megan Smith would be, as HR Director, would be your person to get the information from.
Perfect. Great. And then the next question that I thought would be good to have input from all of you on, we'll be pulling data on the compensation piece specifically from other governments as well as what's happening in private industry. So what other governments would you like us to look at? Whether they're counties, obviously this is publicly available data, so we should be able to pull everything, counties, other municipalities. I want to make sure we have agreement on this upfront so that when we come to looking at the findings of the study, we know that we've pulled all the data that you all would like to see as a council.
Is that something we could work with? Work with, I'd, I'd like to work with Jeff and, and maybe some others that would have input on that at this stage. That'd be great. And if you guys would allow me to kind of help drive that decision as a council.
Perfect. Great. Any other questions? We have some other detailed questions, but we can certainly work together with that. But are there any other questions about the overall study? Once we have those details and then we can work with Megan Smith on job descriptions, benefits, information and so forth, we will be ready to get started. I know I sent a timeline to the entire council, so any questions?
We appreciate you.
Yeah, thank you.
We're excited to get this started, so glad you're here and looking forward to it.
Sounds good.
Thanks for having us.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question on that? The, this is for the council, not for you necessarily. I just want to make sure, I know that we rolled over into a new year, so I don't know if the line needs to be funded again for this study. So that's something to consider for the next month.
Thank you. Okay, let's make sure we get that. All right, next on our agenda, next level grant opportunities. Commissioner Santelli.
We'll wait for it to get pulled up, perhaps. Claire, I, I'd just like to introduce you because we've been working together with the economic development and Molly Whitehead. Could you introduce yourself just?
Yeah, Claire Platt, we're doing EDC. I'm the Economic Development Manager. I started back in June.
And she's been working with Purdue on the, a grant. Can you just mention about the grant real quickly?
Why don't we have Claire come up to the podium so we can get it for those who may be viewing?
I was not expecting to speak. Um, yeah, so we applied for a grant back in the fall. I've been working with Purdue, starting in September, we developed a five-year digital inclusion plan, so digital inclusion expands just beyond broadband infrastructure, also includes the education piece too, so it's all-inclusive of that topic. And starting in January until April 30th, we will be doing an implementation phase, so we'll utilize that grant money to gather data so that we can apply, apply for state funding programs and other grants in the future, and then also build out a robust digital inclusion landing page, so it could be an all-inclusive resource for people to capitalize on, so, yeah.
She's really doing some great things and it ties in with, obviously, the expansion of broadband in our, our county, and that's what I'm excited to talk to you about today. We have set aside $2 million as part of our project commitments to the ARPA funds, and I think this will help clarify further the importance of this. I've been working with Leanne Herrera, who's Director of Government Affairs with Charter, and Elizabeth James is Manager, Manager of Government Affairs. And today I'm talking about the $250,000 match that we would like to do with their current grant application. We've had a number of discussions on this, starting back in October 18th. Marcia and I have had some discussions, particularly with regards to the expansion of broadband coverage into what we call the Sugar Creek area, right?
Rural areas.
Rural area, yeah. So, and that's what I'm going to be talking about today, so with that. What you have up here is Charter's workforce, they have 96,100 people throughout the United States. They pass 53 million homes and businesses in 41 states, 31 million customers, IP devices connected to Charter, 400 million. They, in terms of infrastructure, they've invested $40 billion in the last five years. In the past three years, they've hit 2.5 million homes and businesses, and one-third of the expansion has been in rural areas, which is, I think, great. Can we go to the next slide? So there's a number of funding avenues for broadband and specifically rural broadband. Under Lieutenant Governor Suzanne Crouch, we have OKRA, and they are doing a lot of work, and that's what I'm going to be speaking to. But the ARDOF funds is a big, big government program. It's an FCC program created to close the digital divides, investing billions in the construction of rural broadband networks. And, and it's, it's very significant because it ties in with also what's happening locally. It started out as a reverse auction for $20.4 billion, and this was awarded over 10 years and it was through two auctions. Right now, they're working on at least 20 different grants, and ours is part of that, and the importance of having a matching contribution, particularly with the state, is that it moves you up in the queue in terms of the commitment of the council, the commissioners, towards the development of broadband in our community. And, and I'd also like to say with Claire, we're working on a broadband-ready certification for Boone County, so I want to thank the EDC for their work. It has to be broadband and voice service. The providers set the schedule, not the FCC, and the FCC, as in most government programs, have the authority to claw back if it's not properly spent or not done on a timely basis. So the, the total funding is 169 million in ARDOF funds that Charter is working on, and the Indiana impact is 152,983 new locations to be served. They've, working with Charter, we can go to the next slide. So they've launched a multi-year, multi-billion dollar initiative to expand their broadband availability, and it's over to a million customer locations. And we can go to the next slide.
Real quick, Tom, when you say the locations, 152,000 new locations to be served, what is a location?
Yeah, and I'll get into that. Thank you for that, the lead into that, Don. So the FCC ARDOF support, 1.2 billion. Charter investment's been 5 billion, so they're actually carrying the water on this. 2,000 jobs were added, and the network is 750,000 miles of fiber. And again, Charter is focused on fiber delivery, which gives you a really terrific avenue for doing a lot of different things. We can go to the next slide.
So, so are they burying the cable or do you know?
I do know.
Okay.
I do know. That is great. And, and Marcia, thank you for that question. For our area, they, they have aerial support from Boone REMC.
Okay.
So they have pole permission to add the fiber to Boone REMC's poles, but I also want to say that Boone REMC is also adding fiber to their poles independently, so... And I think if you click, you'll go to the next slide. There we go. So these are the areas that Charter's involved with, which, which covers their rural digital opportunities. And you can see that they're doing a lot of work in Indiana. And it also shows their current footprint, which is in the gray areas, but the blue areas are, are where they're focusing on with regards to rural. And can, we go to the next slide. So as you can see, in Indiana, Boone County is a big focus, and it's one of the first groups that we are working with. I want to thank again Claire, because she's put together a list of all the providers that are currently serving our area through her grant work. So again, a good team effort through that. Go to the next slide. For Indiana, the FCC is providing about $59 million of support. Charter is investing $236 million, and the number of Indiana counties impacted is 44 out of our 92 counties. And their, Indiana network's about 6,600 miles of fiber in the air. Some of it's buried, but, and, and they're going to add another 4,700 miles to Indiana, which is really terrific. And if we can go to the next slide.
Tom, how do they determine, what'd you say Indiana's going to add? Are, are they going to add how many more miles?
4,700.
And how they, how do they determine how much Boone County gets?
Well, it's through the grant process. So they are working with OKRA in the governor's office in terms of applying for these grants. Senator Phil Boots sent a letter of support. Your county commissioners have sent out a letter of support. Elise has a letter on file to send out, you know, in terms of this support. So, you know, part of it is the most recent, and this is out in a number of phases, the most recent has been, you can call in and say, "I would like service at my address."
Thank you.
And this shows, CCO Holdings is up in Thorntown, also in Zionsville and out towards Sheridan, and I'll get into that in a minute. This is showing where they're at in Lebanon. This is showing where they're currently at in Thorntown, and they're working to expand that, which gets into, Marcia, to your point in our conversations, you know, how do we accelerate this into the rural areas?
Are, are they expecting to get over into Mechanicsburg that far? Are they going to pretty much concentrate on Sugar Creek Township?
We're, we're working on that. Absolutely, we're working on that. I think that you, you know, with your focus on this and, and your focus on infrastructure, you know, for our county, certainly you brought that to our attention and, and we are, we've had conversations on that this week, so...
Tom, can Washington Township be under it or two? Just want to marry it in there.
Well, you know, absolutely, absolutely. And the point is, is that as we go to remote learning or we go to working from home, I have plants that I work with in Wisconsin, Ohio, California, and I need high-speed internet connectivity for engineering, for all the other work that I'm involved with. And, and fortunately, where I live in Zionsville, the, the town passed a bond for $12 million to put fiber in Zionsville's locations, and, and it is all underground, if you will.
Did you say remote learning?
What's that?
Did you say remote learning?
Yes.
Like kids at home?
Yes.
I'm going to have to vote against this, though.
I perfectly understand.
I'd do them at school.
After school, after school, remote learning. So what's important here is that these are not lower speeds. What Charter is bringing to the rural areas is 1 gigabyte download speeds and 540 megabytes upload speeds. So it is looking out for the next 10 years. And it's hardwired, so we can go to the next slide and we can...
This one?
Skip ahead, I'm sorry. One more. One more. So Spectrum is, is really working at expanding across America, and they have a big focus in rural areas. They are working, as it says, state funding the OKRA line extension programs, and that is the next level connection broadband grants, which, that's what we're talking about today. And also the application of county use of American Rescue Plan funds, which, as you know, broadband is one of those buckets. If we could jump one more. One more. Sorry. So they submitted a letter of intent for Boone County on September 24, and we had a presentation to the commissioners on October 18. The proposal was to serve an additional 494 unserved homes and businesses within Boone County. County. And that gets to your point, Don, it's very granular. In other words, we have the exact addresses in which towns that they are serving, which I think is pretty exciting and transparent. The full applications were due on January 6th. They pushed it back, I think, to the 15th, as I think, Elise, you and I have been in conversation. There has been a challenge, which they always do when they're submitting grants, is that some smaller companies have challenged specific addresses for Charter. So, we're actually in about the 426 range of homes and businesses that we're going to be serving. So, if we can jump ahead for a minute.
Pass this one?
One more. So, these are, for this grant, these are the focus areas of this specific application. And again, this is $250,000 of the $2 million that the council and the commissioners have committed.
We're including New Ross on that, South County.
Not on R250, no. That's not on R250, that's just in their area.
This is kind of where Claire is working, too. It's helping people get connected. Digital inclusivity is very important. Schools can use CARES Act funding to buy bulk broadband, and that helps the schools. I think what's really important here is that through these programs and assistance, you can deliver high-speed, low-cost broadband to low-income households and seniors for $17.99 a month. Plus, you can get the equipment, too, for that services, which gets back into what Claire's working on, that digital inclusivity. She got high regards from Purdue, by the way, who is working with her, so... So, you've also got bulk internet, too. Like, one pass could be to a retirement home. It could be to an apartment complex. It could be to a major business. That's considered one pass. So, if you have 80 people in an apartment complex, that's one pass.
Tom, is that, like, when you look at that, the rural areas with, does it happen to be that where there's a lot of houses in a rural area? Is that why, is that how you pick the areas? Like, I don't want a lot of detail, but how do they pick those four areas?
Well, obviously, with efficiencies of investment, you know, if you're coming into a neighborhood with 80 homes, and you don't have miles of fiber that you're laying, it's going to be more efficient. But our specific focus through Okra is getting to the rural areas of Boone County and expanding it out. So, you're going to see a lot of activity in '22, '23. You know, this is not the first, this is kind of the introduction of where we're at, and we're hoping to accelerate that.
Tom, if I'm not mistaken, I think R E M C of Boone County, Indiana, was the first in the late 20s or early 1930s, was the first rural electric throughout the whole country, Boone County, Indiana. If I'm not mistaken, I think that's true. But I know in 1960, my father-in-law built his home on 100 South, and he was real proud of a medallion that R E M C gave him, because he was one of the first all-electric homes. And fast forward from, let's just say, 1930 to where we are today, it's fair to say that every home in the county has electricity. So, the goal here is to ensure that every single one of us in this room and the residents throughout Boone County, Indiana, have access to the internet. Is that correct?
Kevin, that's a really good point, and...
And if so, what's the target date to have it all completed? You had mentioned, you had mentioned the total project, did I understand you correctly? $2 million, $250,000 next level connection with a matching grant? Am I correct? You said the total project's only going to be $2 million?
Well, that's $2.5 million for the 427 passes that we're doing.
Okay. But the goal is to get everybody, for the sheriff in Marion Township...
Or Washington, yeah.
For him to be able, in Washington Township, for them to be able to get that access. Am I correct?
Absolutely. It's, Beam Longus and Neff made a presentation to the commissioners in, you know, from the perspective that broadband service is like electricity. I think it's exactly to your point, is that we want to make sure every home, at least that, my goal is every home in Boone County, every business in Boone County has access to high-speed internet, just not the 125, but high-speed 1 gigabyte down and 540 up. So...
Thank you.
This is, this just came out. This is the key highlights of the guidance, and I know it's going to be very difficult to read, but I want to highlight a couple things. The final rule, so we had interim guidance, right? The initial ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan Act funds, we had an interim rule last year. And this is the final rule. And this takes place April 1st. But it says, counties can take advantage of flexibility prior to that date. And it covers a lot of things with regards in...
That isn't... Real quick, April 1st, 2020? Is that what I'm reading?
Yeah, that's a miss...
Okay.
Thank you, Don Lamb, eagle eyes.
Yeah.
Yeah, this came out, this came out in the meeting yesterday that I attended with the U.S. Treasury and NACO.
So, April 1st, 2022?
Yet, in point nine and 10 are that it broadens eligibility for use of funds for water and sewer projects, which we've already been involved with, and thank you for the council's support on these big projects, which includes two bridges. And it broadens eligible broadband infrastructure investments to ensure better connectivity to broader populations. To your point, Elise, it's going, and to Kevin's, it's going to every, every home that we can get to as quickly as we can. And this is per the U.S. Treasury, and this is samples of allowable uses, which support for public health response, replace public sector revenue loss, water and sewer infrastructure, address negative economic impacts, premium pay for essential workers, broadband infrastructure. So, when we talk about broadband infrastructure, we are, to Don's point, we're encouraged to prioritize projects to serve locations without access to reliable wireline with 100 megabytes download and 20 megabytes upload. Keep in mind that our work with Charter is a gigabyte download and 500 megabytes upload. And its lack of access, you know, the focus is in areas with lack of access, access to reliable high-speed broadband connections, lack of affordable broadband, there's incentives there, and the lack of reliable service. And it's, again, we're designing projects to meet high-speed technical standards and enrollment in low-income subsidy programs. So, there's a lot here. The final rule broadens the eligibility for infrastructure investments to ensure better connectivity for residents. And the new feature in the final rule is infrastructure flexibility, and it allows counties to invest in locations without reliable wireline service. I promise I'm getting to the end. I do want to highlight on this slide, because Elise and I have this discussion fairly regularly. And there's a lot of counties that would like to take the ARPA funds and apply them to the correctional facilities. It is, and it was clearly stated yesterday, it is an ineligible expense, except the way that we've built the justice campus is that we would have separate for mental health, we would have separate for the coroners, and also community corrections, and we can use these funds for 9/11 expansion of those services. So, that's why we've set aside about $2 million that we feel would be applicable. In terms of the next level connections, if you jump to the next slide. And again, Debbie has this presentation, so we can send it out to you, so you can, it's a little bit easier to read. But this had to do with Floyd County, which is down south. The county had a $4.1 million broadband project to be completed by the end of 2021. It was with mainstream fiber networks, and the county contributed $2 million in funds as part of that $4.1 million expansion. So, thank you, Karen, tonight. So, with regards for Boone County, the ARPA funds commitment from the commissioner's project list is $2 million. This specific project is $250,000, and includes addresses in Zionsville, Whitestown, Sheridan, New Ross, Lebanon, and Jamestown. So, this is our first cut out, and it's granular enough that we have specific addresses. And I will give Debbie access to that list, because I'm sure there's some of your constituents that you'd want to let them know, you know, what the county's doing. And the upcoming projects, because Marsha's bugging me about this Sugar Creek area and that, but... So, if we could jump ahead to the last slide. So, I like this ad astra per asfera, and with COVID, and these funds being made available. And the objective of these funds is to accelerate economic development, not to put them aside. You can't use them in rainy day, you can't use them for pensions. This is, in fact, driven towards services. And what that means is, through hardship, we'll reach the stars. So, that's the ask, $250,000. And right now, I think what we just need is a memo of understanding that when Charter's awarded that grant, that we will give them the money as part of that.
So, let's look at next month, having that on our agenda as an additional, and discuss that further then. This is a great time, if there are questions, with this January 15 deadline for the application, if there's a letter of support that we want to, you know, be a part of, to say, you know...
Yeah, I've given, Elise, the boilerplate for the letter of support. Phil Boots has sent in a letter, and certainly, the more letters, individuals, the letters they have, is going to be very well received with regards to these grant applications. This is about, in total, about $2.5 million. So, Boone County would be 250,000, Charter would be about 1,250,000, and the total is going to be about $2.5 million for this specific grant application.
All right, any questions?
It won't be an additional unless we get these funds in.
Okay, so how, this is a strange situation that we're in here, and maybe this is a good time to get an update from auditor of prom on the ARP-FRF funds.
Well, as of last Thursday, the U.S. Treasury cannot determine who I am, so I have to start over. So, with Jeff's letter that he signed, he has confirmed that I am the auditor of Boone County, and I can have these funds.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm starting the process over. I have to go through the whole SAM.gov, the ID.me, that's where we are.
What about from a timing standpoint? When do we think we...
Well, we're working with the U.S. Treasury, so your guess is as good as mine. It's been six months, and I'm just at this point of starting over, so...
What was the reason?
For perspective, we're, aren't we, one of the last counties in the state?
There's a couple counties that are having the same issue, don't know what the problem is, other than maybe auditor issues and, because I wasn't maybe on the ballot, they can't verify who I am, I don't know. But Jeff has done that for me, and we have moved forward from there.
Okay.
And I've got a great relationship with the U.S. Treasury members, so we Zoom about every other day.
Thank you. So, what we did for Thorntown, we did vote on that appropriation, of course, letting them know that it was subject to getting the funds in. So, I would think that we would follow that same procedure.
I mean, they have marked this as high importance, which we're a level four now instead of a level two. I'm hoping it's quick, but...
So, let's put it on next month's agenda as far as, you know, looking at a vote on the amount. And then, are you asking then for this letter by Friday for this deadline?
We're working on the memo of understanding.
Yeah, I think you can do a letter of financial commitment to the project, just like we do for the end-up funds. So, I think if you guys were to vote on a letter of financial commitment of the $250,000, when and if it's available, it doesn't commit, it doesn't commit you if you don't get the money, but it commits you if you do. Do we agree with that? Yeah, it's just, it's just a letter saying that once the money is available to us, we'll use it for this purpose.
Okay. So, as far as going through the, well, it's my understanding we need to go through the process of an additional to appropriate this money.
We won't have to do an additional, because when and if those funds come in, they come in in their own fund.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's a grant fund already set up.
So, it's appropriation.
So, those funds are, will already be in a fund, you just have to appropriate them.
Right, through a meeting and through a vote.
Yes, absolutely.
So, that would happen next month, because we need to have advertisement for this?
Yes, yes.
I would be wary of voting on commitment prior to the first meeting.
Okay, so let's put that on our agenda then for next month. And in the meantime, we can do a letter of support that doesn't have any financial implications to it as far as, for the sake of just being supportive and thankful. Okay. Does that all sound good and clear?
Yeah, it would just be an appropriation once the funds are received. It's a memo of understanding to Charter that we are committing these funds, pending them being appropriated to us from the U.S. Treasury.
Right, which that action would happen in February's meeting.
Well, the appropriation would happen in February. The memo of understanding would happen now, and it is pending the receipt of those funds. So, it's clarified with regards to that.
Okay, so much what you did before.
Pending the receipt of those funds, but also pending a vote from this body on that $250,000, because we haven't, we can't vote on that today because it wasn't advertised, so we've got that.
You can vote on, you can vote on the MOU.
But without financial...
Without the financial commitment, the next meeting you can, you can vote on the financial.
I apologize for this question, but has this project been...
Could you, let's make...
My name's Ash Delbrake, Taff Law. This project in general, and I apologize, has this been bid?
Has it been bid?
Is it, is it a grant funding or?
It's a grant funding.
A grant funding for a project through the county?
Through Okra.
Through Okra.
So that.
You are asking today, I apologize, I.
No, not at all.
You are asking for a memorandum of understanding?
Correct.
That this body will approve funding. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, if we get the funding.
If we receive the funding.
We've submitted our project list, which includes the $2 million in broadband coverage and expansion of that. And we are working with companies that are applying for grants to expand that coverage. Does that make sense?
It does make sense, but this wasn't on the agenda for today, correct?
It is. It's under new business.
I'm, I'm hearing like half of the body saying it was on the agenda and half of it saying it was not.
It's on here. It's under new business.
Okay. Just to, this is an informational session to, you know, Tom, to share with us what's going on, and we really appreciate it. So, okay, so we've got the financial piece that we'll vote on, we'll advertise that for next month. This month, because I understand there's an application that's due, the January 15th, so you're asking for a letter of support, just saying.
A letter of support and support of.
That we'd love to receive these grant funds.
And support of the memorandum of understanding, that we're going to, if we get these funds, and based on a vote of the council, that it's our understanding that we will give those funds as part of this grant application. We will provide those funds. So it's, it's a memorandum of understanding with caveats in it.
Okay, we're going to have to have some help probably drafting that. I don't know if we can make a financial.
Drafted, correct. So I think it would be hard to vote on something that isn't drafted.
Yes.
Especially at a meeting where it wasn't noticed.
We voted on other memorandums of understanding that haven't been drafted before. I think we all understand what the letter's going to say, what the concept is. I don't, I mean, we've done this before.
I think that the issue is the financial piece.
Right, it's assuming we get the money, we're going to do that, we're on board.
Well, but we can't, go ahead, Counselor Williams.
I'm just providing, but, I mean, I can't tell you how to vote.
I think I'm trying to, I think I'm getting your question, and the question she was asking is whether it had been bid on or not. And that question is yes. The FCC has awarded charter communications this particular area. So no other provider can do what Tom has arranged with them to do for these particular homes, and that's through the FCC. So there's no bid that's required for that. And that's why there was a challenge of some of the addresses, because some of the providers that are out there, I think, you know, Frontier might be one of those that challenged some of the addresses, because they were already within their network. And so that's why those addresses were removed from that list. So the bidding has already taken place through the FCC. That's not something that would happen here. So the letter is just a commitment of the $250,000 if and when we get it.
Okay, and I think that's where, I don't know that, we can't do financial things right now at this meeting, because it wasn't advertised in advance of this meeting. So as much as we'd like, maybe to, I don't know where everybody is, but I think we've got a technicality there that's going to keep us from doing an MOU that has any kind of dollar attached to it until we can get that advertised and through the appropriate process.
Wouldn't this be similar to the law we did with Thorntown?
Yes.
Yes, but that was.
And if we get the money, they get the money?
Yeah.
Yes.
Exactly.
It's the same thing.
Right. So.
I think in general, if you, like, I think what we do today is important. In general, it gets back to the big picture of stepping back, and like, we talked a little bit in the past of having, we need to have some conversations about the big picture of the ARP money. You guys have got your list, and then we have to approve it at some point. And yet, it's part of a big picture. So yeah, I mean, honestly, it sounds like a good thing, sounds like something we ought to do, you know. But, but it doesn't feel good when something's presented, you know, at a meeting, the, this Friday, it has to be turned in, that we commit to money. You know, we've got drainage projects that have had lots of people involved and really big numbers and all that, and that's, and so you're kind of, you kind of tie the hands of the council at some point in saying, do we really, you know, I don't want to, you know, we don't want to at some point say, no, we want to work together.
Yeah, this was, this was the presentation from October 18th of last year.
Correct.
And, and that's why certainly, we encourage council members to, to attend our meetings and to read our minutes, so that this is not a surprise. I mean, we've been working on this for a considerable amount of time. And this is very important to the rural community, if you will. So.
And I'm, and I would say, I'll stand up and say, say, I would like to go ahead and move forward with this. I think it's a good thing, I think it makes sense. I'd like to do what we need to do today. And I do think it's a lot like Thorntown. And so I think that's, I think that's right. I just am encouraging communication, more communication between us. And I know we can come to your meetings and, and get it. But in the last, since I came, in the last four meetings, there hasn't been any discussion of ARP funds in county commissioner meetings. So I also would like to have a little more specific, you know, just, just conversation about it. So, you know, I guess I'm saying I'm ready to move forward here, and this, it is a real big part of it, and it sounds like a great project. But I do want to, I do want to have more conversation in the future.
The issue is, we started this October 18th, and now the letters are due in, and it could well jeopardize the, the grant, you know, to serving these locations.
Can I just ask for a point of clarification? With the Thorntown one, remind me, was that on our agenda as an additional?
No.
No, we just voted.
You voted on the MOU.
Okay, so.
With retrospective getting this one.
Right, so as far as the, as far as the requirement for advertising with an additional, that is not a part of.
It's an appropriation, it's not an additional.
You won't be doing an additional.
Okay, so we can.
If it's not an additional appropriation, I apologize, I do that. I'm not aware of what, where this is coming from. If it's not an additional appropriation, then, you know, not voting on actual, actual funding.
Well, they will eventually vote on the funding. But all their money is just a commitment that when those funds come in, that you are willing to discuss the dollar amount, I think is what they're asking.
I, yeah, I guess I thought that you were really wanting a commitment. We will spend money.
I mean, it's very similar to Thorntown.
Yeah, it's a memo of understanding with the caveats.
She left with her MOU signed. So it's kind of the same.
But there's no actual document on the agenda today, so. We need to be on motion as to what you are voting on, first of all. I'm not, I'm not clear what you're voting on, so I'm having a hard time identifying what you're voting on. I'm hearing different things from different people.
Was there a document for Thorntown?
Is there a document?
I think there needs to be a consensus of what you are actually voting on, and then a vote you may create or make. And once that vote is.
It was just under new business as Thorntown wastewater project and funding request. So it's, it's the exact same thing.
And it was a letter of support for Thorntown?
It was a letter.
And it, yeah, and it's basically the same thing you've done with Trailers before, end up letters of commitment, Nick supplying for community crossings, grants, and things like that. It's just, it's the exact same thing. You guys, the commissioners sign them all the time, just a letter of support saying, this is for this project.
Yes.
And we did not have the letter ahead of time, and it's not in that agenda and packet memo. So it's the exact same.
Yeah, it was agreed upon at that meeting, and then the MOU was signed.
The exact same thing.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're clear on our process. This is a new, still a fairly new dynamic.
Yeah, that's what I tried to go through. There's been some changes, and thank you, Don. It's April 1st, 2022, not 2020. So, yeah, moving, moving along.
I'm happy to vote on whatever we come up with. Now that we, I do want to make another comment, though. Now that there is another change in how to spend the ARPA money, aren't we going to reevaluate now some of the ideas that we originally had? And, because it sounds like we can spend money on roads with this change, but I, I don't know. I have no clue.
But now that final rule doesn't take effect until April, so it could change again.
Yeah, so, but I'm just, just thinking, okay, now let's reevaluate this list that we've come up with. But, but.
Well, it doesn't.
Rural broadband is important to our county. I mean, we've got people who basically are holding their phones up here and, and twisting and standing on chairs or on cabinets to get, to get reception. I mean, this is important.
It's, it's mission critical for our county. We're not the first.
Okay, so let's do a motion then for a letter of support and an MOU that when we get the funds in, we will be, you know, this will be a priority for support with the matching funds. Does that sound fair? Okay, so do we have a motion on what I just mentioned there?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. And do we have a second?
I'll say.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you.
Great discussion. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
All right.
Can I, I just want to say thank you for that, and.
Yes.
Recognize Tom for the work he's done on this. He's put an incredible amount of work into this.
Thank you, Tom. All right. Moving on to old business, Boone County Justice Commission update. Marcia and Aaron.
We had a meeting yesterday for our Boone County Commission. We had multiple stakeholders there. I thought it was a great discussion. From that, we were able to come up with a list of questions. We're going to be submitting those out here by the end of the week for some written responses. Basically, we kind of just asked, just clarity on a couple of things from the different work groups. We've had an opportunity to visit a few different facilities and tour. Thank you to Prosecutor Eastwood, who after our last council meeting gave us an opportunity to come and visit and speak with him and some of his staff. So, Marcia.
Ditto. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, salary amendment. Max Mendenhall, facilities.
Okay, good morning. So one of our custodial staff, or janitorial staff has, originally she was going to retire and work part-time. She has since decided she would like to continue full-time, but she did go ahead and submit her paperwork to perf to start pulling her perf. So we would like to amend her position to a non-perf position. So we'd be changing the title from a janitorial housekeeping to janitorial custodial, so that we can determine the difference between those two positions. And then sometime in the future, I'm sure we'll be changing that back to a post-custodial position after she does decide to go ahead and retire full.
Okay.
I move to approve whatever it takes to do that.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Max. All right, public comment.
We'll have another.
Excuse me?
Salary amendment. Nick. Your discussion's final, not yours, but you're bad, you know, no voters, this is for you.
I've got something to bring. Was this on the agenda? Okay, I wasn't aware this was going to be on the agenda. We discussed this, I think, at length in the process of seeking a, the county engineer worked with Bob on a lot of the legalities part, worked with Megan going through the process. Not really sure what the request is in this particular situation, but I know that there was going to need a amendment to this.
We've talked about, but we need to make an amendment, because we're not sure where it was being paid from.
Okay, so the, the challenging part of dealing with the salary ordinance was determined, and now the, the amount, and I'm not really sure still exactly what it is I'm asking for, but the total amount we discussed last year in the fall versus what's actually on the salary ordinance, and the amount of the sign-on bonus, the sign-on bonus approval that was part of the salary package, and we're not even to the limit that we can pay in those lines. So we discussed at one point, we were going to do an encumbrance on the salary from last year, because we didn't pay it at all last year, into covering those to this year. I'm not really sure where that one stands either. So there was a lot of moving parts. I'm not really sure exactly what I'm asking for.
I'm asking.
Why don't you come over here and tell us what you want them to do, because I'm not really sure what you want.
I need you to approve the $10,000 sign-on bonus that Nick and HR have agreed for our new engineer, because it is not on the salary. It is above the salary amount.
Correct.
Technically.
Yes, it was advertised that that would be a sign-on bonus for you.
So I just need the salary ordinance to reflect a sign-on bonus.
For simplicity reasons, Nick, over that money in that line before the end of the year, that's what she's trying to take care of.
Well, that's an additional, I think. That's where I was, I was confused, because.
It's not an additional. It's a salary amendment. I just need the salary ordinance to say that he is allowed a $10,000 sign-on bonus.
Because it doesn't say anything about that, so it's just got an arrow.
I moved to do that.
And I also need to know, are you paying half and half? Are you paying highway, or commissioner's paying it?
No, it's got to be half and half. We have to pay the salary for the engineer has to come out of MVH. We discussed that during budget time, because the, the $40,000 stipend for MVH goes into MVH that we get for hiring a county engineer. So that's going, there's going to be half and half. Half the wages come out of MVH, half of it come out of general.
So you're taking five out of commissioner and five out of highway.
Okay, you're, yeah, you're, you're going after the salary or the.
That's all I care about.
The sign-on bonus, we're back to that. So yes, we can pay it however you want to pay, but half and half is fine.
And keep in mind that the stipend that Nick is talking about is a $40,000 contribution to the salary that comes along with hiring a degreed engineer. So, and, and hiring a degreed engineer in this environment is not an easy task. So I want to thank Megan and Nick for their due diligence. This is something that when Craig left us, he left us in great shape, but at the same time, finding an engineer in this environment is like finding a gold needle in a haystack, and, and they did it. So thanks.
So I think my ask is that we amend the salary ordinance.
To reflect the sign-on.
For the sign-ons.
And you, you made that motion, so you need a second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Prosecutor Eastwood.
I, I apologize for taking up some time of yours. I wanted to inform the council that we were able to renew our grant for the gun liaison program. We're getting $110,000 from the federal government to continue with our program. That'll take 100% of the salary package for that deputy prosecutor, in addition to training for her and law enforcement in Boone County. Just to give a little highlights of what, a year ago I came to you, said we got this grant, give me this position, give me this person. And I want to tell you what we were able to do with that, with that grant money. Again, we haven't spent a dime of taxpayer money on this program, on this prosecutor, on any of the trainings. In the last year, we've seen a 64% increase in illegal gun possession in Boone County. Now, I'm not talking about, I'm just talking about illegal possession of guns. So these are people that are not licensed to carry a firearm, or, or felons, serious felon, felons, domestic vatters, people of that ilk. We've also seen an increase in other gun-related crime, but those stats are a little, a little too hard to pull very quickly. But think about, we've seen a 64% increase in just illegal possession in one year. During that time, we provided training to every single law enforcement officer in Boone County on the black flag Jake Laird law. So we went to every single department, had multiple trainings available to them, where. every officer now should understand how to do that correctly and what goes into those cases. In addition to that, every single Boone County officer was trained on what the gun liaison program is. And in short, what the gun liaison program is, is that we have specialized deputies, specialized officers who are trained to forensically collect gun evidence. So every single officer's been trained on why we need to have this program and how to, how to accomplish it. Then we've had about 50 officers in Boone County go through the training, we've had two, two separate three-day trainings where they are specifically trained on how to collect gun evidence. And there's two things we wanna find from that. One, we're trying to tie that person to the gun found, say a gun's found in the vehicle, we wanna tie that person to the gun, and we also wanna try to see if those guns are linked to any other crimes. Recently, we had a case in Zionsville where the gun recovered in Zionsville was linked to a murder down in Marion County. So those, that's just one example, we've had that happen numerous times already in the last year. In addition to that, we've held, we've held, we've held two gun liaison training schools for these 50 officers. We've also done training for the CIT program on twice, the crisis intervention training. I know, Madam President, you're aware of that, because I think you spoke at one of them, where we've trained over 150 officers, not only Boone County officers, but other officers, on immediate detention, emergency detention for, for people that are having mental health issues, along with some Lake Jake Laird law training. On top of that, we've also, we were asked, we've had some great success with our program in a very short period of time. We were then putting on another training and we were asked to do it for other counties. So we've provided training for now seven different agencies, five, in five different counties. Included in the training that we've trained are people associated with the ATF and also with the Indiana Crimes Gun Task Force. And again, that training, we got, we got a separate grant for that where we didn't spend any of our tax dollars on that. So next year, we're gonna continue with that, we're gonna continue those trainings and we're also gonna create a video for when new officers come on, so we don't have to come back and do the training every year, we're gonna create a video about the Jake Laird red flag law, so they can simply watch the video versus us coming back and training all the time. So I just wanna give you a little update on what we're doing with that money and as this council is aware, that money will go away, that $110,000 a year is gonna go away. And so I think next year, we'll get 75% of, of that, of that salary package. So that's where, you know, we talked about this, that, you know, we're gonna have to pick this up eventually, but I think you guys can see already that the benefit's paying. And we've got five years to figure out how we're gonna pay for this, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Rod Nagle. We have a group of folks in Boone County that we've been trying to get more involved, more informed in what's going on in our government. And a couple of things, number one, will the Justice Center Committee's notes be published anywhere where we can go back and take a look at what's going on with the committee? Is there a way to get that published?
We will, I've tried to get it on the website, but I'll run that with.
Okay. And I guess kind of in conjunction with that, I don't know if you've gone to the website lately or not, but the council meeting and the commissioners' meetings have not been updated since September.
Yes, they.
They are? I just looked, I just looked, they're not on there. So if we can get those on there, that'd be greatly appreciated because that way it gives us the ability to inform them.
Like the other recordings or just the notes from them more?
Well, just what are, you know, what are the notes on there that, that the public needs to know about so we can keep them informed? I just checked a few minutes ago, Debbie, so unless, unless we're going to the wrong website.
What professionally knows?
No, I'm talking about council and commissioner meeting minutes. Okay, we may be going to the wrong website then, because like I say, September was the last one that we saw on there, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, yes, let's make sure.
Good morning, Michael Lance, Community Corrections. Just wanted to give you a quick update. We received word Friday as far as our pre-trial grant, if you remember right. I was requesting an additional pre-trial officer and also a field officer. In addition to that, we requested, I have one staff member that's currently paid by that grant. And all of the popper attorney fees for last year for those meaningful first hearings were paid out of that grant. So really quickly, just if you, to remind you, the state mandated that we implement this pre-trial program and that when someone's arrested, that they have an initial hearing and that be a meaningful first hearing, meaning that they have a representation there. The way that we're doing it in Boone County is through the popper attorney program. So we sent in that grant. About a month ago, they sent out an email to everybody and said, shockingly, we mandated something in the state, so every county's asking for money, so we don't know how we're gonna pay for any of this. Then they gave us our award letter on Friday, all that they're gonna fund in Boone County is my current position in my office and $15,000 for popper attorney. And last year, they gave us 34, so they didn't even give us enough money to pay for the popper attorneys for this year. So be anticipating either the judges or my office, depending on how we work it out, coming back at some point later in the year for an additional to figure out how we're gonna pay those popper attorneys because they have to be present at those hearings. I also want you to know that because we didn't get any funding for any new positions, we've completely restructured how we're doing things in our office to spread that work apart. So we're doing what we can to not have to come and ask for funding for a new position. But I've already told you guys, the DOC on the community corrections side, we're at our maximum dollar amount allowed. Now with the pre-trial through the Office of Court Services, they're saying they're not giving us any more money. So at some point, for community corrections to do what we need to do and keep growing, we're gonna have to start asking for money on the county general level. We did do very well last year in project income, I just ran those numbers yesterday. We collected $517,000 from our clients, which has never been higher than about 430 before. So we're doing our part, trying to collect money and, and keep that running in-house. But I just thought you should be aware, specifically for the popper attorney piece, because that's being funded through the court's budgets, so they're going to run out of money because of those meaningful first hearings, so.
Did we lose our money? We got $25,000 before.
Yeah, I meant to tell you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Now you know.
I need to double check that, Cam, what was yours for? Oh, for, I think they just, it was reduced, yes.
Okay.
I can send you a copy of the grant aside. So.
Yes, we do.
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn our meeting.